Okay, it's eight thirty on September something or other here. Twentieth, twenty-first?
Twentieth.
Friday.
What time zone?
Sunday in America. We're calling the meeting to order for this order of business, I guess we'll salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reward for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First appointment is with Sue Weeks. It's about the French cemetery, or is it about a lot of?
Good morning.
A lot of other stuff. Good morning. About cemeteries. Just a quick update on the French cemetery. Don't know if you're all aware of the damage that got done by the little storm we had a week after the work was finished. It's horrible. We're trying not to get into a litigation or anything over who's responsible for that. So I have ongoing emails with Matt King. And his latest position is that it's an act of God that did it. And they will donate their time and their own equipment to fixing it, but they would ask that we repay their subcontractors. And he hasn't got a price on that yet. I assume the subcontractor is going to bring in a piece of equipment to lift.
Probably the crane.
Well, it might be just a backhoe, because it's just the one post that needs to be lifted. I don't know. So I gave a whole pile of stuff to Diane to start an insurance claim, but then Nat started negotiating again. So I don't know if they should start the insurance claim anyway.
I guess I must put the insurance claim.
Yeah, if it's a time constraint.
Get it in there if we don't need it, we don't need it.
Yeah, if it comes down to litigation, it's the litigation.
Our insurance company.
Get us out of the mess.
Right. And either way, we have a thousand dollar, well, we have a thousand dollar deductible on the towns of policy. I don't know if they fight with his policy if they get that thousand dollars. I don't, yeah, I think that's the logical plan is to go forward with the insurance claim.
And what all was the damage that happened?
I didn't bring the pictures today, but the rain, we had a freak rainstorm that just dumped a lot of rain real fast in a short period of time. Maybe, what, six hours, I can't do, I can't remember. The storm just went through, I think it was to do with one of the hurricanes maybe. And it created a loose run on the side of the road, the side of 109A, and washed out all the fill they had put in. And created a vortex or something right in front of that corner post. The lower corner post.
Fell over.
I mean, and it's fourteen inches square, five, six feet tall, so it's heavy. Very depressing, because it was so nicely repaired. Okay, so our cemetery committee is struggling with how to handle our budget. We have been out doing inventory of all the old cemeteries again. Mark needs to know where they are so he can take care of them, for number one. But the work that needs to be done in these cemeteries is unbelievable. We found this big stone up at Camp Suttonell in the Grant Cemetery. Turns out it fell over and broke last winter, again, obviously it had been broken before. And they just epoxied it and stood it up again, which isn't really the right way, but the whole base is broken, it's like three or four pieces, it needs to be reset. We need a whole new concrete base for it. It's leaning badly, it probably won't stand up, we gotta go out and try to brace it to hold it up for the winter until we get somebody in there. We've got Fields Jones Cemetery, the fence. And then we have a tree break. It's just, it's still like that, it's still hanging.
On which site, is that the same cemetery?
Yeah, that's Fields Jones. We finally got in to look at the Dane Cemetery. And you can see the walls all need to be rebuilt. And you might also notice a few trees. I mean, every single old cemetery has got tree problems. And you can't just get a chainsaw in there and knock them out, you need equipment. And it just, this is a horrible one, this is Captain Smith down off McDuffie Road. Look at that tree. It's like a third of the shell of the tree is standing. And it's got a branch that's this big around, right out over the six stones that are there. There's no way for it to go but right on the stone. And nobody can climb that. You gotta have a big crane that can go in and pick it up and pull it out, but how the heck do you get it down off McDuffie Road to get that? And so, you know, this is your cemetery, Chip Mount Pleasant. It's beautiful, but those trees are all gonna come down.
Yeah, the pine.
At some point. It's like ten thousand dollars a day to get the right equipment. You know, I don't know how you even get it to that, but.
Well, with kind of an off-road crane.
Yeah. So we have over fifty cemeteries, all with issues. And a day apiece with a big piece of equipment is ten thousand dollars if you really come right down to it. And if the equipment only takes seven, then you could spend the other three on repairing stones, resetting them, putting them upright and so forth. So, you know, where do we go from here with these things?
Well, I would think that if you catalog it and come up with some sort of long-term plan, I mean, I don't know any other way around it, we're not gonna.
I could do it all in one year. If you couldn't do it all in one year, even if you had the money to do it.
If you had the equipment, there aren't that many days.
Yeah, I think you're right. Identify, and you've got a good start here.
Just try to prioritize, but even if you do one a year, that's fifty years.
Well.
So anyway, we're thinking we're gonna be asking for ten thousand a year increase to our budget. And I think the other thing we really should consider is a warrant article to allow us to put any unexpended funds into our expendable trust. I mean, it's a big jump for this category, but it's not big.
Now, your expendable trust is for private donations, right?
For anything. We have two. We have two. One is the sale of plots that we can expend the money. The other one is for private. I don't believe there's any restriction against public money going in there.
There is.
There is?
Trust funds can't co-mingle tax dollars and private donations.
Okay, so we can set up another one.
So if we wanna have something where we take leftover budget money and put it into a trust, it's gotta be, it has to be something that specifically deals with tax management.
Can you use the strategy that if you're under contract with a tree company, that you can send those, we can vote to?
Well, we can encumber funds, but that's a.
Leftover money, money that's left in the budget, we could encumber with a contract.
Right. Just a possible strategy.
And have we, have the trustees talked anything about grant money, Alchip, Santos, historical?
We haven't, we've just been talking that we have to do some kind of fundraising to get the public more involved in.
Well, another approach to look at with respect to this maintenance is to specifically set up a reserve fund. And then put money in that every year that you're gonna use as, if you're not restricted to a specific annual cycle to use it.
Right, because some cemetery will be more than others, or less than others, or whatever.
Right. So, you know, and separate from your regular budget, which is the annual mowing and those kinds of things. Something that's separate from that, that's a.
Right, and you may wanna, I mean, I don't know what your plan's gonna be on this. You and I aren't kind of long enough to see the end of it. But, I mean, you may wanna accumulate money for one cemetery.
Right.
Spend money.
Well, or several cemeteries in the same area. You know, if you're gonna get the crane down into Kanan Valley, there's three cemeteries down there, maybe.
Do them all?
Maybe you need to look at all of them at the same time for a cost-saving.
And so you prioritize this ahead of stone repair? Or would you do them simultaneously, or, I mean, I can't see.
We've been doing seven hundred and fifty a year for stone repair, which gets us three or four or five stones fixed that aren't really bad. This year we used a thousand really fast. And we could use another hit for another five hundred probably for that one that I showed you the picture of. So, you know, that needs to come up a little bit, because we're not keeping up with the damage that's happening every year.
So, remind me, what is this cemetery's total budget for the year?
Twenty-two thousand, I think? Twenty-three, four fifty.
So you'd be looking to jump that up to like thirty or thirty-five?
Yeah.
And if you, I mean, I think we're, I'm at least in favor, I mean, we have this responsibility to have. I think we can probably come as supportive, select, but that's a good thing to do, but then we gotta defend it with the budget committee, so.
Right.
And should we just go like CIP, is that, I don't know?
We had discussions about that, but it's not something that, it's something we should be doing constantly.
It's not an improvement plan.
I don't know.
It's a maintenance.
It's a maintenance thing, a repair and maintenance, it's not a new project. So it's not something we should wait ten years to address with the one shot. You know, so I don't know, we had some conversations, but we didn't think it quite fit.
When you mentioned Field Cemetery, this triggers a project I was working on with a road agent. I'll give you a little background. There's several towns that hire companies that have all the equipment for tree removal, and it kind of bleeds over into helping other towns and the first, other projects. And I went through about what they expected to do. Then the last thing is consider services needed by other town departments. Example, chipping up brush at the transfer station and tree removal that are nearby the road, like the Field Cemetery. So I think there's a way, in my mind.
Maybe that tree should come out of the highway budget.
Well, you know, it's all the, it's all the town.
It's right there on the side of the road.
It's all the town budget, and, you know, this is just the preliminary stages, and we were gonna talk about it probably today, but.
Where is this cemetery?
The one on Sodom Road.
Sodom Road.
Oh, okay.
By Smiths.
It's a big pine tree, it's right at the top of the hill there, as you go around the corner.
Yep. So is there any other big trees next to that one that's gonna come down, or what?
Could, there's two trees there that could come down.
There's a couple on the bank that might come down if you.
Well, the only reason I'm saying this is, I work with a handful of tree companies around the area, and I've seen them go up a tree that's safe, go up to the top, and then they bring a rope down, they swing over to the other one, they tie it up.
Oh, Tarzan.
They can send it, I've even seen them pull, like, they put a leader thing where they pull a rope, and they'll cut a limb, and it will slide down right out of the cemetery where they can send a limb, and they cut it piece by piece, and they just send little pieces, it'll slide down a rope on a, I don't wanna call it a shackle.
It is pretty amazing what they do.
These guys are all local.
I watched Lovren do that at the cemetery up in, on 171, up at Tuft and Bro Corner. They were pretty clever on their rope work.
Yep, he's one of the best, for sure. If you wouldn't mind looking into some, whatever grant might be out there. I think that'd be helpful, because if we could supplement whatever money we can raise in the budget with grant money, and maybe make it a twenty-five-year project as opposed to a fifty-year project.
We might look for that.
And I had asked Sue to dig into her amazing memory and help us out with this nineteen-month thing. Pierre, though you know more, we should, so. She hasn't done anything, no. It's not like, I promised a pair.
If there's something out there, you'll find it.
Yeah.
And that's a compliment.
Well, we know it's been there a long time, the war. How long, I have no idea.
The biggest thing is the lake level has changed a lot.
Oh, sure it has. But was it there before they put the dam in at Lakeport? Probably not.
Well, the dam wasn't, the dam wasn't as high as it was.
Right, they raised the level.
Yeah, it was like eighteen eighty-something when they.
Raised it?
Raised it, yeah.
No, it's been in, the dams along the river there, it's unbelievable how long they've been there. Like, the first settlers, the state.
Right.
Started putting dams, and there was a whole series. Been waiting.
I'm sure water power is what allowed you to do stuff.
Yeah, yeah, especially then, so.
But the Lakeport Dam, didn't that go up, that went in sometime in the late nineteenth century?
No, it was there much earlier.
Was it?
It was much earlier, but they kept raising it, making it bigger. In the eighteen sixties, the Winnebaski Lake Cotton and Woolen Manufacturing Company bought flowage rights from every property around Winnebaski and the tributaries coming into Winnebaski so that they could raise it again and again, and they just kept raising it. There's a ton of lawsuits in the eighteen sixties and seventies that people claiming they raised it more than they were supposed to, blah, 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 so.
All right, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, sorry to take too much time.
And, well, talking about.
How much do you think we're gonna talk about?
Library trustee has come to talk to us about something, I don't know what, but before we get to Jim, can we get to Jordan?
Sure.
All right.
We have a situation with money, so it always goes down with money. Think back, what makes it? January fourth meeting, we met, we discussed doing the plans in advance.
Your voice was working fine till you had to fuck, right?
Yeah. No, getting the work done in advance, okay. We figured out a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We agreed to go and split it in half, sixty-seven, five for each one of us. How do you intend on funding that?
Capital reserve fund.
Okay. We have reached the point now where we are approaching the end of the capital reserve fund. The trustees, the trust funds have said, oh, thank you, have said that they only want to release the money that, the dollar amount that was approved at town meeting out of the trust fund. So consequently, when we paid our bills this last time, we had to write a check for eight hundred and seventeen dollars and change to make up that payment for the month of August. There's still sixty-eight thousand dollars in that trust fund. I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna get it out of there. They don't wanna release it.
Well, we have authority to expand.
Well, thank you, because, you know, I went back to the, to the meeting.
But I get, my question is, did we ever, in addition to what was in the article on the warrant, did we ever spend that, whatever it was, for the architect's fee? Because that was separate, that was before it went to town meeting.
Exactly.
That was under our authority. So if that, if that hasn't come out yet, then it's.
By the time the bills start rolling in, we paid one or two of the first ones, because that was actually before town meeting. And we said, we can do that, and then we'll wait until after town meeting, then have the town money kick in. But if you have the authority to expand, then how can the trustees and the trust fund not release some money?
They have the responsibility to ensure that money that's expended out of trust funds is done in accordance with the law, okay? Including, you know, restrictions on its use. So they may, even though we're agents to expand, look at, be looking at what was authorized at town meeting as a total. But the expenditure for the architectural fee was before it went to town meeting. The money may have come out after town meeting, but that was a separate transaction from what went on the warrant.
Well, as I'm saying, this is, I can't go to them and say, you know, release some money, that's not the purview of trustees in the library. However, sixty-eight thousand dollars is still in the account, and I don't know how else we're gonna pry it out of that account, so that we can. Because once that's gone, then we'll start kicking in with all of our money, and then, of course, we'll run up with the balance through taxes.
So it's sixty-eight thousand? Sixty-eight thousand?
Yeah, well, we, we had encumbered, you had encumbered sixty-seven thousand, five hundred, there's been some interest, so it's about sixty-eight thousand, though.
So if we were able to encumber it, we have to be able to expand it.
Well.
So I guess we.
We didn't, yeah, we didn't encumber it, it's a trust fund, we authorized the expenditure for this.
I know we ran into a problem with one of the warrant articles from the library, where we couldn't spend money out of it, because.
The reason being was that the original warrant article written in two thousand and ten, or twelve.
And that was for a new library, not for an addition.
But if you go back to not just past town meeting, but the meeting before it, the one, the one we had to postpone the vote because of the law here issue. We changed, we changed the wording in the capital reserve fund for indivision, and it has with, it's like when having the authorization to expand, so.
Okay.
Can I interpret something? The trustees of the trust funds will go strictly by the warrant articles that establish the money in the fund. So I don't know, I don't know the details on this one, but if that was there earlier, I would guess they're looking at an earlier warrant before that, where it may have started.
Well, we're looking at the, we're looking at the warrant that passed at the last town meeting, which was for three hundred and, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred out of the trust fund, which had an excess of four hundred thousand dollars, because we had already agreed to go, you know, half and half on the architectural fees.
Right.
But if you didn't, if you didn't do anything, request any money from them before town meeting, I don't know whether, how we're gonna be able to make this work.
Well, it's apples and oranges, okay? The first piece, which is the architectural fee, was separate from what went on the warrant. That's right. And that decision was made in advance of town meeting.
But if you were going to do it out of the trust funds, and that requested money released from the trust funds, is that gonna be, is that the issue? Is that what we're gonna have to deal with?
It's, well, it's separate from what was authorized on the article.
So we just need to establish that we voted on expending money that we were enabled to expand before, prior to the.
Prior to the, prior to the warrant article. Right. And.
Well, as I say, this will be the end of it, because the next bill that comes through will use, is gonna be faring excess of that, you know, sixty-eight thousand dollars, but we're making money on, we're making money on our money as trustees of the library, and I hate to give up that inventory, but we don't have it.
Get that printing press cranked up real good, huh?
It's still okay, it's still okay, it says they're happy.
Yeah, I guess worst-case scenario is it still comes out, I mean, it's money to be expended for the library project. That gets confusing. But maybe, the warrant article for this year was three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three fifty-five-five.
So maybe they're limiting their expense to cover three hundred and five thousand, delivering money in library funds prior to this year. Anything else?
Well, then, so I can then tell my people that you're working on it.
You certainly can.
Thank you.
We are working on it.
Well, yeah, I have a reoccurring nightmare, is that if that sixty-eight thousand dollars is gonna sit there, we're not gonna be able to touch it until next town meeting. And have another, have another article.
Right.
To release that sixty-eight thousand, which by then, by then will have grown to X amount of money, you know, to pay the bills.
Right.
But, you know, we're cranking away on this building, and.
You think it'll be done by next town meeting?
We've got to be close, it's, of course, when they're framing, it always looks like.
It goes up faster this stage, it's the finishing work that seems to take forever, yeah.
But, you know, Sherwin-Trust is a much simpler project than others, and we're going pretty quick.
Hey, that's a great one.
Well, we wanted to get it done before that.
Yeah.
Okay, then, so that's.
Hopefully I can report back to you on the twenty-fourth when we meet with the library.
Okay.
Let's try for that.
Agreed, though. Thank you. See you.
All right, our next parent-child is our road agent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Did you give us the road agent budget, Ken?
He doesn't have, no, that's not.
I don't have my budget.
Yeah, we don't have it.
Wait, maybe. Sorry, we have some more numbers to come in. Doing the update for now, I'm going through a few things that, or a list that we were supposed to talk about today. First thing, there's been a request for a slow children playing sign on Buttermount Lane and Birch Lane. And I talked to the chief about it, and he's okay, but suggested I have to run it through you first, and that you can okay it. But we also talked that maybe just one sign would be adequate for the thing before it splits off from the Birch Lane.
What's your recommendation?
I think, I think it's a needed sign for sure, there's definitely children up there.
The location?
I think one, just before it splits off, should be the same.
Especially if you word it, I mean, there are no slow children, I'm talking about.
You do make jokes about children.
Does it take a vote by this board?
So we haven't had to do this before, I sound a little bit new to that.
I thought we approved that at our last meeting.
I thought we.
Yeah, I put an email in your bit, did you get that? They did approve it, but you're asking about one. You're asking about just doing one, right?
Okay, well, I'm asking about the whole thing, because I wasn't sure.
Oh, okay.
It was approved. I didn't realize that, but...
Okay, sorry, I got to put it in. You're welcome.
Seems like one sign would, what's your idea?
Yeah, we'll start one for you to do that next year, when we have no money in the budget for signs, which are low. The wood chipper is up and going, runs well?
Is that a diesel or gas?
That's diesel. Yep.
I'll speak on that later.
Okay. And then the knotweed...
Are you leaving the fun?
I gotta go research 19 miles.
Oh, there you go.
All right.
The knotweed is actually being sprayed today as we speak.
Including the dump?
Yes. Yep.
It seemed like you must have done the hand-held patch at some point, I see.
We touched it.
A little less.
Yeah, it seems like it's...
It's gone down.
Yeah, it has, yep. And, um, let's see, I also have numbers for paving that I got from Frank Carroll. The copy for everybody. How can we do that?
So the Daimer is the total length left?
It's not. It is actually what I call the top section, which is on the Ledge Hill end, from Ledge Hill into where we left off, basically, with the new pavement this year. And there's actually a list of colors that we have that need to be changed. So I recommend that we pave North Line, we do a full, full depth for information on that. And if we all agree, I'd like to get that top section of Daimer to continue on with that.
So that's the 49,300 number?
Correct.
Okay.
No, it's no, so inch shoulders, so, no, it's a 61, 95 plus 8, 5,400 for the shoulders.
And that'll leave the 109 end?
Correct.
Not done?
Correct.
So that's another 4,350 feet, so it's probably about the same amount of line. This is 4,600 feet. So the surface on North Line in 2021, let's push that out to 2021. So you're, you're looking for 132,6 plus 12,150. All right?
So...
145, 750?
Okay, yes, we won't be doing that surface, but we're going to do the shoulders. So there's the 32, uh, 132,600 plus 12,150. And then if we do the Daimer section, we'll have another 49,300, oh, excuse me, 61,950 plus the 54.
I have for Daimer to do it completely, 67,350 dollars. Is that what you have?
67,350.
Okay. For North Line Road, the entire project, everything that's in the parentheses, 241,570.
No.
What do you have?
I've got 145,750, because the surface is doing in 2021.
How about 144,750?
Is it 144? I'm sorry.
Yeah, anyway, yeah, the surface is, that's, that's a top coat, that's the following year. The piece in the middle.
The 132 or the 68?
No, 68.
Okay. So it's 212,100 dollars?
Yep. Plus prep work.
Right. Right. So you're looking for 225,000?
You said 173,570 for North Line Road?
Uh, 140, 144,780.
I'll add it later. It's the 28,820, correct? The 132,600, correct? And the 12,150, correct?
Oh, you're adding 28,820? That we, we didn't add.
Yep.
That is correct.
If I then add 68,000, I'd come up to 241,570. That is not a correct number? I think the top coat is, is the next year. Which is the top coat? It says 2021, surface 2021, right here.
Which is 68,000?
68,000. So she had 28,820. 20, uh, 249,20.
I came up with 230,920.
Really? My, my math is that far off?
Have a look.
Oh, wait a minute, no. I didn't care. So you're right, 240, yep.
240,920.
Yep.
So that would be your paving warrant article?
Well, plus you usually have about $50,000 for road construction.
Because weren't we at 280 last year?
285.
285.
And that's, I think what I have proposed for this year as well, on the CIP, which I think we might want to do as well.
I have a problem. I reread the road study. We have 50 miles of road. Each road needs attention within five to eight years. And we're getting farther and farther behind. For example, look at Ledge Hill Road.
Yeah, I mean, there was this top section that was...
And to confuse the issue even more, can I take a moment and talk about Ledge Hill Road?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
You insisted, and I think it was great, to re-grind as much of Ledge Hill Road as we could. And we went all the way from Daimer Road, from the school to the Daimer Road, to Daimer Road, right?
Close to Daimer Road, not right, but...
Look at the road from there to Tufton Borough Corner. Well, that was a section that was not... Was not grinded. Was just, was just paved, right, the top section.
Top section was just a...
Just an oval.
Which is in bad shape now.
I, I, it's the second busiest road in town. There are at least 11 companies with 10-wheelers that are hauling out of Evans Pit, coming up Dergan Road, down Ledge Hill Road, and down Union Wolf Road. You own two of them. They haul 84,000 pounds of material at a time, don't they?
A little less, but the most you can haul is 70,000.
Okay. Quiz, one big truck has approximately the same effect as how many cars?
I don't know, I think, I think it's like a...
10,000 cars. Now, follow my logic, please. That's math. I couldn't believe it myself, but it's been proven to me. If you have 10-wheelers hauling from Evans Pit to Marriott's, you're going to make about six or seven trips a day, correct?
Little less, probably six, at most.
Right. So let's say five. That's 55, five, excuse me, 550,000 cars.
Seems a lot.
The road is getting pounded to hell legally. And I'm amazed it's, it's lasted as long as it has, thank you. But we've reached the point where, how big are the cracks? Getting bigger, right?
Correct.
And here's where the state has to think, take care of your roads you have. We go another year or two, and it's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars to get that road back in shape, right?
I think we're at that point already.
My understanding is, my understanding is that if you want to do it right on the top part, we'll have to do what we've done to other roads, which is reclaim it. Yes. Right? So whether it's now or two years from now, or whatever, the, the expense to reclaim it is not going to change significantly as it deteriorates for, I don't think. Right? Because you're talking about basically ripping the whole road up and starting over. So whether it's falling apart or it's just got big cracks in it, it's still the same issue. And I hear what you're saying, I, I'm not sure what you're proposing. Do we, do we abandon this other stuff and do the top part of Ledge Hill? I'm going to throw something out. It's been perfectly obvious to me, all the committees you deal with, and even at town meeting, dig, we think we should be spending, investing more money in our roads. It's loud and clear to me. I don't know where the answer is, but I'd like to explore this.
Well, which of the culverts on North Line and that section?
Thank you for listening to me.
Are on the list to be rebuilt or reclaimed or something. What part of our culvert?
Oh, the culvert on the red, on the red list? There, there are actually culverts that are red listed. Particularly on the top, there's one underneath the beginning, right off of Ledge Hill on Daimer. And that's a big culvert, and it's actually down deep, and that's, we're just red listed as well. So, yeah, we'd be getting rid of the red list.
And on the drainage issue, which seems to be a thorn in some people's side, up on the top, I mean, it's called Ledge Hill Road for a reason.
Yep.
It's mostly Ledge Hill. What other parts, other than paving and grinding pavement, what other construction issues are up on that end?
Well, it's strange, you know, obviously, you know, we got, the more we can do with the drainage, the better, the longer it will last.
What about catch basins?
That's drainage, yep.
Okay, and that might take five years, but start at Daimer Road and do the catch basins every 50 feet, correct?
Yeah, I think, I think that's something that we should probably have an engineer tell us exactly, you know, how far we should go.
Because the, there's some other things involved. As long as the water is in ditches, 60% of it's going under the road. When you have a catch basin, it's in a pipe, and that road's drying out. The other thing is, when you do a culvert, I was going to ask you about this a little bit later, doesn't it make sense to, to seat the culvert halfway in the PGA that doesn't freeze? And then do like we did on Lang Pond Road? You, you put a, a pre-cast header at both ends to prevent piping? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Why, I'm very aware what you're talking about. So, yes, we do use the crush glass.
It's, it's worked on Lang Pond, right?
Yep. Well, we've been doing that for a number of years now, is putting the crush glass underneath the culverts. And we'll continue with that. But also, when you're talking about the pre-cast, those are very expensive. And they are necessary, we have a large flow of water like that. And some of the smaller flows, I think we get away with...
Coleman will now make them, so you have one that, like this, that you put in the bottom, and then you put another one on top.
Gladiators.
And what this does is, and you pointed it out to me, if we go with a culvert and, and fill it in and then put rocks here, the water still goes underneath, moisture still goes underneath it, it's called, called piping. And you're, within three years, you're right back to the problem. I support putting concrete headers that Coleman will build for us. And I went to another, a couple of other towns.
Gilbert Block, well, actually, yeah, they've, they've helped out headers for me as well. Again, you know, we've done them, and not cheap, you know? The last one they built for us was, I think, $15,000 for one culvert. It was a bigger culvert, but nonetheless, but not cheap. What we've been doing on the smaller ones, which I think is working fine, we haven't had any piping, is we've been doing it out of stone and mortar, and it's actually working pretty well. That was one of the pictures that she took on that study report. We did that culvert with the header, we should say, we did that header with, with the stone and mortar. And it seems to be holding up pretty well, and that was one that she pointed out, she thought looked very good. Again, I don't think I would do it if I was down on Lang Pond. It all depends on the flow. You know, especially like a seasonal thing, you can probably get away with that when you have the smaller seasonal flow ones, not a regular flow.
Well, on Lang Pond, we had overflow problems.
Yep, that was one that I...
And that's why they paved.
I would compromise with the engineer head for sure, and go exactly where what they had, which...
Okay, thank you.
So you brought it all up, what do we want to do with it? I mean, do we want to, do we want to have, I mean, how hard would it be to come up with a number for Ledge Hill Road? And Carol can put something together for you.
Yes, correct. Yep, I can certainly ask if I can do that.
And scope out the other, I mean, catch basins, et cetera, that need to be looked into?
It just reminded me that perhaps, like, now Sawyer Road just saved $12,000 because he bundled three projects that were close by. If we included Ledge Hill Road and the public went along with it, we're now bundling three projects very close together, right? So we... The first thing that has to happen on that upper section of Ledge Hill is the drainage has to get fixed, right?
Yeah.
Because if we just reclaim it and we don't, and rebuild it and we don't address the drainage issue, we're limiting the life of that road.
I think either we do the drainage in 2020, do the whole, do it in 2021.
So... I want sure.
We need to know the numbers before we make that decision.
I agree. Yep.
Okay. So...
Thank you. Well, I think we're, we're in agreement, well, some of us are in agreement, that in terms of our regular annual paving that we're looking at, reclaiming base coat all on North Line Road and the upper section of Daimer Road are $241,000 is, is what we're looking at. Plus the road improvement stuff, you know, digging the rocks out, all the stuff. So, which probably brings it pretty close to $300,000.
Yep.
Now, and the other thing beyond that, I would suggest if we're going to do, and I think it makes sense to do something on upper Ledge Hill, drainage, whatever it is, figure out what the cost is and, and do that as a separate project. Separate article of warrant.
Yep.
Going forward and...
Yeah, I don't know if we can make it a separate article, but I suppose we could. I mean, we're going to explain it pretty thoroughly to the budget committee, so I think that's...
Sure.
Works, but at town meeting, it might be a little, almost to go from 285 to 450.
Yes. Which is, you know, my thought about a separate article, it's, you know, every year we do road repaving and rebuilding, okay? We have a situation that needs to be addressed that's extraordinary, if you will. The drainage issue here is going to cost us $50,000, whatever it is to, I have no idea, to do that. And you deal with it separately, and it doesn't take the road repaving and just shoot the way out the...
Yeah, I guess I'm in agreement, I just don't want to, if we're going to do a separate warrant article, it needs to be a significant project.
Yes, right.
It's not just...
It shouldn't be $10,000, no.
Or even 40 or 50, duh. I think it has to be culverts, all the culverts, the catch bases, the whole thing, so we're, we don't have to revisit this five or 10 years from now.
Right. I agree, right.
So maybe this is one way to handle it, I don't know, but, so I know we have some money left over from... from
SP thirty-eight.
Yes, SP thirty-eight. So if we can get a head start this year on doing the rest of the culverts on Dane Road that we, you know, need to do for paving and North Line, because at the moment, we actually have, on North Line, we have three culverts that need to be replaced. The ditching to be excavated out and we need to cover back over the, the culvert crossings for the winter. So we're not gonna try and retain them. And we're built head walls and whatnot for them. And then on Dane Road, we actually had on the top third of Dane Road, four culvert crossings that need to be replaced, one, one of which is a two-foot one and it's, it's down pretty deep. So it's gonna take a little more extra time. And, you know, ditch lines to be excavated out, if we could do that this year using that money, next year we could start with the money that we'd be raising. We could be doing, working on the drainage and stuff like that on, on Ledchill. That'd put us in pretty good shape for the year after for paving. For twenty twenty-one paving.
How long will it take you to get a good number for on, on the drainage projects on Upper Ledchill? I mean, we're talking, you know, culvert replacement, catch basins, how many catch basins where they are, I don't know, but.
I can roughly figure it out.
Yeah.
I would like to, you know, maybe we talk to Boyd Smith.
If he knows the engineer, if we're gonna go to that extreme, I mean.
Well, well, I, I know Dave Ford has helped us in the past.
Yeah.
He actually didn't charge us for his time. He's been pretty good about that. When I had a question, I called Dave Ford and he usually stops afterward, I mean, on job site or whatnot, and he explains how he thinks it should be. And that's a possibility to get a rough number. I don't know if we can hire Boyd Smith to do something like that, or if we need to go through HEB or how that passes.
Can I sit down with you?
Sure.
I've done some research.
Okay.
I like, I've always liked your response and your answers and, you know, you're very knowledgeable, I'd like you to have this.
Well, are there use for that money? I guess that would be the next question. Have we planned on putting any of it towards the peer work or?
I don't. That, that was my, that was my hope, is that we, within the period that that money was available, could be using it on the peers. Now, you talked to Crines when you did this, so I don't know if based on what we heard from Tyler Phillips at our last meeting, I don't see we're gonna be doing any work this year.
I, I don't think we'll be doing any work this year either, because even, I mean, Mike seemed encouraged and positive about the whole thing.
It's not a quick process.
It's not a quick, right, and they have to put it on their agenda and they have to go through their whole thought and pony show. So I can see it stretching.
The boys have to talk to the boys and everybody sort of get warm and fuzzy about it before they actually deal with it, right?
So, yeah, and how long can we hold on to that money? It's not in a definite period of time, is it?
I, I think it's, we have to obligate it this year. Okay, so I mean, we can encumber it this year if we had a specific project, but I don't, we're not close enough on the, on the union work project.
And if it's, yeah, I mean, it's six and a half those together, it's got drainage over here and.
And we'd be giving up some of the culverts off the red list, it would be also nice.
What about using it on some projects that need to be done as soon as possible? For example, repair Durden Road four corners.
So I actually did tie that in, I tied that in on this list. I have the North Line and then I have the Dane Road. And I also had Durden one seven one in this section to be paved at the same time, since we got our paving done. And that's the time to do that one, we're gonna do this.
I spoke to Mr. Elders and what needs to happen is the paving that was done by the town has created a saucer. And the water comes down next to the yellow house and goes across the road, never makes it to the culvert. He recommended that we contact a company, Mike Allstead, to have them dig out the pavement and make a three and a half to four foot swale as far back as you can go at a one or two percent grade. So as the water that comes off that property and the water that comes out of the basement, there's two drains there, goes into the, the culvert.
But that wouldn't be cutting out the existing pavement as much as just making it off, the swale off the side, is that correct?
I didn't, I didn't bring the, the pictures with me. If anybody looks at where those cones are, where a private citizen put those cones, is, it's. Here's the catch basin. And the pavement is up like that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Okay, so there is a section where it's off of one.
And I've asked him, I said, does he have a problem with the town working with the state, where technically that's on their property? And he said, no. Anyone who looks at this understands that the you weren't there when they, they put the coat on and.
They went extra thick.
Oh, yes, I, I mean, a number of inches. And it's now got to the point where, what's that intersection is the thing with me, is I've now seen multiple instances of trucks with trailers and cars and school buses coming down and they're into the next lane. No, because they have, because they're vehicle tracks. I saw one old lady go through there and I thought she was gonna destroy her car and tear the rear axle out and she was just putting a lot. This has been a couple of years and this is absolutely important that this gets done, we have the money to do it.
Yeah, no, I, I agree and I would like to do the paving for the cross culverts that we just did on North Line.
Yes.
And we'd do that at the same time, so we're gonna get a better deal if we get them all done.
Do all the, all the patch paving together.
Because there's probably a day's worth of work for a company like that.
And tie, and tie this, whatever's necessary around this state drain, you know, that.
I think there's some complications in your business, but if you continue with that swale, I think there's gonna be some pre routes in the way.
Well, how, how far, how far off the road are you talking about the swale going?
Three and a half to four feet.
Okay, still within the right of way.
That's the other thing that I don't know.
Well.
Twenty-five feet from the sun line.
Yeah. Because that's what we always run into is.
And the other thing is.
You got, you got a fifty-foot right of way and for proper drainage, a lot of times, it has to go outside the right of way, which means you're in somebody's yard.
I don't think this one is that far off the side of the road, I think.
But there are lots of places where, where it does.
Yep, true, but we had dug that area out he's referring to, we've already done that before in the past. We've excavated that out, we did lower it back in and seeded it for him. But I think what this time he's saying, maybe it makes more sense to do a swale out of pavement. I agree with that, we've already done it without the.
And the other thing, out of courtesy, I'd be willing to go with you and speak to the landlord, so it's a new one there, so. But, you know, this is a dangerous intersection.
Yep.
Okay, I, I also listed off a number of other projects that have been pending. Entrance here, entrance to the town transfer station, mowing. And on Tuesday, I'll be speaking with a guy, Clay put me onto a guy who would do some of the brush cutting and mowing of the different projects that you and I've talked about.
Well, I, I know, is that, if I remember, the SP thirty-eight money is supposed to be used for additional projects, for stuff that you don't, you haven't already budgeted for. So the driveway apron, that's in the budget, whether we get to it or not. So I don't think it falls into that.
But we have money set aside in my budget for aprons.
Right.
Just waiting to see that we can make it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so we've already budgeted money there, I don't think, I think we're gonna foul, spend the SP thirty-eight money for something that's already in the budget.
I have a copy, sir, of what it says. And it's underlined, unused balance may be carried over to following municipal fiscal year and expended for highway construction, reconstruction and maintenance purposes. It also goes on to talk about can be used for related equipment.
Right.
I've asked the powers to be, and I said, I said, yes, it could be used for that. It still has to come from this board, so.
All right, let's put together a plan here again. So you're gonna get us some numbers on the drainage on Ledchill and whatever other issues you have down there on Dane Road, which wanna get started early on. And the one seventy-one junction with Durden.
Yep, I actually came up with the, the numbers to change the culverts out on North Line and the top of Dane. And during the ditching, head wells and also intersectional to be repaired at the same time on one seventy one and Durden. And we're talking approximately thirty-five thousand. I think I have five thousand left for paving and I think there's twenty-nine thousand.
On SP thirty-eight.
On SP thirty-eight, it's twenty-nine thousand, I think, five hundred, something to that, of course.
As I look at your budget, you've spent eighty percent of it. Because winter was so bad. How much money out of your budget do you need to set aside for this year's? Have you done any research on that?
Can, can we, can we finish this issue before we move on to the next one?
Yep.
That's my suggestion.
Yeah. So you're saying there's twenty-five thousand dollars left or twenty-nine thousand dollars left on that?
Yes.
The email thread someplace has got that number in it, right?
I, I actually have it written down, oh, here it is. We have twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and nine dollars.
Okay.
And I can't, it's kind of, it's left in my paving, but.
And what is that, the block grant?
Yes.
Yes, that's the, uh.
SP thirty-eight.
And I have as far as, for the paving budget from, left over from this year, we have fifty-eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars left. So between the two, I think we have enough to get it done this year, so long as we can get that route.
So that's four culverts on Dane, three culverts on North Line. And correct the drainage going into that catch basin at the corner of one seventy-one and Durden.
Correct, that should be.
Did you have your digits?
Yeah, yeah. Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I hope for that. Okay, should we vote on the motion that we spend the money that we've got?
On the set items?
On the, yep, the list that was just.
Second.
All those there?
Aye.
Okay.
Winter budget?
Winter budget. Okay, so we did, I just set aside, we're not spent, I should say not spent, but we have money left over from summer that we still not spent. Where I had twelve thousand, almost six hundred dollars. So we're gonna add that to the winter, that I have right now, just under thirty thousand. And then I'm hoping to save some, another hopefully ten to fifteen thousand dollars from either, you know, a combination of fall and, you know, some of the other stuff that we have left. Hopefully just try to just take a little from each one if we can save money somehow, from each item that we have left. And the crack sealing and, and whatnot.
What do you anticipate you're gonna need for your winter budgets?
Well, I'm going by your math, because it's been pretty close.
Yes.
And I think you have me at like fifty-eight thousand. So that's what we're gonna shoot for and hope for the best that we don't get a lot of snow early.
Right. Sounds good, sir.
So there's your fifty-seven thousand in my book, and I have to finish up your other expenses, you've still got, well, you're upside down on your catch basins, but you've still got a little bit of money left in culverts. Are you gonna do any more roadside mowing?
No.
Okay, so you got that much. And tree mer, tree removal, or I mean, I'm sorry, different paving?
That one we'll leave a little bit, so I'm getting prices on it now. Talking with Allstate on it, on Allstate, excuse me.
So do you feel that that is gonna cover this and the transfer station?
Well, we're gonna find out, and we can find out, and that's what we're hoping for.
I need to speak with your transfer station because that interception needs to be moved over, it's not a right angle. I saw a, a trailer truck almost tip over when it went up on the bank.
Maybe we could look at that.
Yep, I have it drawn up for you and I need your expertise.
At the transfer station?
Yes.
I know you're referring to, because when you go to diagonal like that, it's, it's not correct.
When trucks come from Sodom Road, Norton Borough direction, you draw a tractor trailer, it's tough getting in there. As a matter of fact, Lucas, that's doing the power lines, went and put cones there.
All right, and you've got seventy-five hundred crack sealing and process that you adamantly refuse to do.
No, no.
What are you gonna do about crack sealing?
We do it every year.
Okay.
We just don't do it every road, because seventy-five hundred, it's not gonna, it's a drop in the bucket. But we always do all the bridges. We seal all the bridges so that, you know, we don't get drainage problems going through and causing future problems. So we've always done that and we usually take our best roads and start with our best roads and we go as far as we can, like Sodom Road, obviously some of that. And, you know, we just take our best roads and work on them.
You're doing more, I would guess, you.
Yep, you're doing more, right? We always, they're small, they're small right now, so we go quickly.
And sealing keeps them doesn't, doesn't keep it from opening up, but it slows the process.
Keeps the water from getting.
Right.
Hopefully.
So that crack sealing is gonna happen yet, in the next few weeks?
Yep.
So you think the seventy-five hundred crack sealing is gonna be used up? I don't remember that.
Will you have any money in the budget to do the five stock lines?
I do, I think we will have the money and I called again yesterday to Lakes Region Striking. Still waiting for a call back. But yes, he's, he's gonna give us the deal since he was so late, so we're, we're gonna find the money for that and make it happen.
All right. So your CIP submissions?
Yeah, I have those here.
And there's a work session for you there for you too, that will have them for you to recover to, that middle one and the very one, yes. Some are ones that are already submitted and then some are ones you might wanna ask them, I think that's how I did it.
Okay, so as of right now, I've submitted five. You can always change these if you need to. And I did change one already. Yesterday. There was a mistake made, I can't read Tricia's numbers, she can't read my numbers, I don't know if we disagree or disagree on that, but who has the better handwriting? So I did move out the paving of the town garage park mark. She had accidentally put down two thousand twenty, which we moved up to two thousand twenty-two. Gonna give us a little bit more time to basically budget for it. Then I have the paving that I put in for CIP at two eighty-five. You know, again, subject to change, but I had to get these in before we had a meeting.
Right.
I don't know how you guys felt about that number. And then I put in money for this one was for next year, I look at getting the Sanders next year. You know, it's fifteen thousand dollars to replace the two Sanders that we have. After talking with Lloyd, you know, I, I did a deal, they were, they were old before I started.
Well, you already saved us money when you traded one for two. And it didn't cost the town anything, so you're already.
So these are for the smaller trucks?
Correct, yep, the smaller trucks. You know, they are old and we've done some maintenance on them over the years as far as, we had changed one of the motors, we had some newer motor, but that was probably five or six years ago. They don't last forever, but.
Now, are you looking, are you looking at poly or are you looking at?
Stainless steel. Stainless steel.
Stainless?
Yeah. The polies, you know, great idea, but they're not very ready. The, the problems are now starting to come after a few years, because they've only been on the handful of years. And, yeah, they have problems. Yeah. So I think most people are going back. They're nice if you're just a small company and you have a pickup truck. You can take that sander in and out yourself.
Yeah.
That's what's nice about it. But they don't make big commercial ones really that can be, so it's really not for highway departments. So we're looking at the stainless steel ones. And, uh, we're looking at about fifteen thousand dollars. Again, if we need to change that, we can change that.
For two?
Correct. Two small ones, yep.
Okay, so we're not replacing, um, the truck until twenty-twenty-two? And that's the ten-wheeler?
So that's another thing we probably want to talk about. I talked to our dealer that we bought the truck from, for a while. And, you know, I, we were originally talking, I think we were gonna go ten years. And he said, well, you're honestly do, are much, much better off financially if you trade them at seven years, because that's what most towns are doing now.
You're absolutely correct.
Because at ten years, well, between nine and ten is when you're gonna stop putting money into them. You know, you could be putting fifty thousand dollars worth of repairs into them. And that's money you don't get back when you trade it in. So.
That's just keeping it going.
Exactly. Yep. It's no value to it when you're doing those repairs. So he said that it's a proven fact, you know, right now that, and I asked him to send me some kind of literature so that I could present it to you, but I have not received it yet. That you do better by trading every seven years. You get a better, you know, investment on the dollar by getting yours traded in at seventy-five thousand dollars, and still worth seventy-five thousand and buying a newer one without putting money in all the time in between.
I can't support that more wholeheartedly. I spoke to four road agents and highway managers and they all talked about six, seven, and eight years their ten-wheelers disappear.
So when were you planning on putting this thing to war? If you wanna go to seven years, what would that place?
Cause it's two thousand fifteen, it would be two thousand twenty-two, the trucks are two thousand fifteen.
Okay. So we've got two years to up to do that.
Correct.
Unless we wanna put some money inside, but we'll talk about that at a later date. We wanna start building a cash reserve that was supposed to take what all the whiles. So the only thing you've got going on is Sanders and paving?
Uh, nope. And then I have, uh, the heating system.
Okay.
But that's still out? That's not for this year?
No, I'm just talking about two thousand twenty.
Okay. Yep.
That's it.
Paving.
So approximately three hundred and five thousand dollars, fifteen thousand, whatever it is.
So you're talking about Sanders this year?
Yeah. Yep. If we can, if we can't, you know, you guys, you'll figure it out.
Well, we don't wanna load up twenty-twenty-two anymore.
Right. So I think, when you, when you put these projects in, you ask for when you want them. Somebody else is gonna move pieces around the, the chessboard, but, you know, and somebody else is gonna move priorities, but
Yep.
To try and second guess where you think you need it because you think somebody else wants it there is, uh,
So we're comfortable with that, we're gonna get through this year with the Sanders that we have. Without putting a lot of money into them. But we're thinking the following year we're gonna be putting money into them.
Yeah, and then if you put the heating system, you got thirty thousand dollars worth of additional more out, as opposed to fifteen and fifteen, which makes a lot more budgetary sense.
Okay.
So if you do the Sanders this year, the heating system next year, and maybe we'll talk about putting some money aside for this dump truck.
Yep.
Which I, I don't know, I'm running for reelection, but if I run for reelection and it comes back, we're gonna buy a dump truck, it's going out to bid. We're not calling a deal or making a deal. I'm just not gonna put up with that. Cause I think we spent too much on the last one and I think if we don't put it.
We did a deal on the last one.
I'm sure you thought we did. But there are lots of deals out there, and there's a lot of, we just need to spec it out, put it on, on the street and see what we get.
But last time too, keep in mind, it wasn't planned that we were doing it.
No, I appreciate that.
So.
We did the best.
I can pontificate as much as I want, but I understand the situation.
Yep.
I think what you did.
Fingers at you.
What you did last time worked out fine.
Yep. We're happy to have it.
Yep. But it's, uh, to take a more planned approach and, and.
It's like the used body and, I mean, I just, a lot of the stuff on that deal, I just didn't care for, but I think we can put together.
It was what we could afford at the time.
Yeah, we was, we could put together better next time.
Yeah. If you have more money to work with, I agree. Absolutely. It is gonna be more money though, no question about it.
Right. Right. And.
But yeah, rather than never having used body again. Cause we're having new every time from this point on. It'll be more planned out.
Yeah, and some warranty package. That's for another day.
Yep.
All right, so that's the CIP. Any thing else from this group? Dan Green?
I'm good. I have some things, so if I can.
Okay.
Remember you and I talked about doing what Setta Harbor did in other towns? Putting up to bid our tree cutting?
The tree cutting?
I'd like to go over that with you at your convenience.
Okay.
Basically, uh, in a nutshell, it's, they would come every Tuesday and they would, first of all, storm damage cleanup. I chose not on Monday because there's so many holidays. And they would do, uh, trees that are hazardous, trees that your plow is banging into. If they can get ahead on some, on road issues where trees have to come down. And then you heard my comment, maybe comb in with your services.
So this would have to be figured into the budget?
Yes.
Differently than what we have now, right? It's not gonna fit in, as is.
There's, there's more than enough to do. Uh, just, can I just go through a couple of other things while you're here?
Sure.
We have three projects that have been talked about. Shirley Way, Federal Corner Road, and Ledge Hill Road. We talked about Ledge Hill. Citizens have come in, taken pictures and have talked about that. Where do they fit into our plans? We've talked about Ledge Hill Road, but what about the other two? Excuse me. Especially where citizens have taken the time to come in and speak to us.
Okay. Well, I think we're gonna have to just try to figure out where we fit it into our budget at this point for this year. If it's gonna happen this year or next year, we're gonna have to.
So may, are you talking about the Federal Corner piece beyond the?
Burley Road, yes.
So it's Burley Road?
At, at least. Actually, there's a number of culverts, a number of areas on Federal Corner Road. That's becoming a busy road and a feeder road. But I'm talking right now about Burley.
Yeah, Burley, well, I think we should discuss that. I think we need to discuss that at another time.
It's almost like a land pond road inside, uh, issue.
Well, well, I think some of it, you know, comes off the driveways that creates a lot of issues, so.
I mean, maybe if we're looking at, I mean hypothetically, taking the Ledge Hill Road piece and putting it separate warrant articles together for the preparation for pavement in the form of drainage plant, maybe we package something together with, you know, Burley Road, Ledge Hill Road, and whatever else needs to have, you know, attention next year.
Right. So this year we're doing this one, but next year we're gonna do a special road project for a different road.
I like the idea of that.
Yeah.
And maybe that's what we call them.
We, yeah.
Special road project warrant articles.
Yeah. I mean, we can't, well, I think it would be foolhardy for us to say, we're just gonna do all this stuff in one year. Cause we have limited, limited, limited resources, you know? It's all stuff you have to arrange. You have to supervise what goes on. And, uh, you only have so much time. So to the idea that, you know, you get all these different things going in different places.
They're all gonna creep up, like any county road is gonna creep up on you.
Yep.
I told that the other day. And the MAC, you know, there's all kinds of places that ultimately will spend money. But if we can make an effort to do.
Some targeted special road projects?
Yeah, two projects a year. Say, you know, Ledge Hill and Burley. And then next year do something, two more.
And a neighbor pointed out there's still standing water. On lower section of Shirley Way. Is a culvert missing or something?
When it stops, we have a beaver problem up there.
Beavers?
Yep. They haven't, but they came in all at once and I thought we hadn't taken care of it.
They do, they're like, next, they all come together.
I'll go stream of consciousness here. Could you speak with Jack in order to get the generator in the electric company, he's to move the meter?
Okay, yep.
And, and speak to him. Our, our rec director is having knee surgery. Is there a place adjacent to your building to store, um, the, uh, many tables we have around town?
The picnic tables?
Yes. Clay, Clay has mentioned that if he puts the, his box of plows in, he doesn't know if it's gonna be room out there, so.
I don't think we have any indoor room. I know we have zero indoor.
I, I thought I saw some, a rental sign for the other half.
Oh, are we talking about over there? I thought, I think you meant the camp garage. So that's going to.
Okay.
Yep.
If there's someplace you can think of, uh, if you could, speak to Clyde. He'd be willing to work with you.
Maybe we need to pick up another container to put up at the transfer station.
I've already given that information.
Uh, what about the, the machine shed? Is there room in there for those? Oh, no.
On my seventy-one?
One seventy-one.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. I think we call it the tractor shed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I remember when the tractor used to be in there.
Yeah. So I.
It's funny, we all call it.
Is that why some of their equipment off dock, that docks already go?
Not anymore. They used to storm out there and now they have a little shed down by the beach that they keep men.
Yeah, we store some stuff there, but I think it's minimal. I think it's, um, the crack sealing machine that goes in there. And I think we still have some ropes that grow up there that aren't big spool for the swim lines. So there is some stuff, but I think it is minimal.
So maybe, maybe that's, they can go in there.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
It's gonna, the other thing is, I talked to Dennis, maybe leave the oldest picnic table out. So it can be used by people who wanna sit under the pavilion. Just a thought, safe space.
Oh, yep. Okay, so.
I, I have some positive things to say. They've happened on your watch. A granite post on Durden Road has disappeared.
Well, that was on you. They saw the minutes and read about the newspaper and they called about it and they actually moved it on their own before it could even get up there.
Well, the other thing is the stumps are, you guys spent a day grinding them up on Union Wharf Road. It's gonna save your snowplows, good job. Boy, they worked hard and directed traffic and, and whatever sort of. And the other thing that happened on your watch is that pole on County Road is being moved, so. I don't know how involved you were in all these things, but they happened on your watch, so thank you. Uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about was the brush chipper. I see where we spent a thousand dollars on it. My vision, if I'm out of line, say so, was to have it thoroughly checked like we did the six-wheeler. And have used the, uh, the Volkswagen funds. Just, just a thought, so.
So I read that and, and it said it had to be used a minimum of five hundred year, uh, five hundred hours a year. And you'd have to have that documented.
We don't use it that much.
There's no way we've ever used it that much. I think they seem probably have fifteen hundred hours on it since the day it was bought brand new.
How old is it? It's longer than you've been here, right?
Yeah, much over, yep. We'll cancel on that. I guess it was, it's like a two thousand four maybe?
Uh, that, that's where I was coming from.
But it actually, it runs pretty good, you know? It's going right now, if you're gonna see it, it fires right up.
I trust you, trust your judgment as well. I had thought about, uh, replacing it and you and, and Clay using it.
I honestly think you'd be better off to, like, to have somebody come in with a tub grinder, with a dump, and just seat it with an air conditioner.
Clay has located someone that will, uh, a lot cheaper than what I was aware of, so he's, he's on top of that.
Yeah. I think that's the way to go. I've talked to other people about it and other towns and that's what they've done.
The other thing is, um, I went to, um, to Crowell's and they'd be willing to inspect and change the fluids in your ten-wheeler. Inspection would be thirty-five dollars instead of seventy-five. They'd also put it up on the lift and go through and check everything, so.
I was planning, we'd just continue on with the dealership that we did. I don't know, I, you know, like, since they're holding the warranty on it, I'd like them to go through it so that any warranty items they can fix.
What I did is I've gone through the past budgets and it was seventy-five dollars to inspect it, to a post office box from Wolfborough. I just did this research, but I knew I could speak to you and.
Yep. We can certainly talk about it, but I do like bringing to the dealer where we purchased it and have them go through it.
The guy you deal with is a selectman in the next town, hold on.
He is.
Remember we had that conversation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you. Thanks.
We, uh, from the road survey, uh, one of the things that was part of that whole thing is that they're gonna come. They, they, they'll sit down with us every year to update, to upgrade that, so does it make sense to reach out to L R P C and see about getting a, a date on the calendar to sit down with them and?
I like the idea.
Get your culverts plugged into their survey and what.
Have it all updated.
Yeah.
And I think that's a great idea. Call them?
Sure.
If we can get that done in the next thirty or sixty days.
I'll call them as soon as I leave here. See if we can't get something, you know, as quick as possible, at least to come in and talk to us.
Yep.
And, you know.
Jim, I have a couple of questions before you leave, okay? May I?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, how, how many years is the warranty on the truck? Is it a ten-year warranty?
Uh, no, I believe it's a five-year.
Oh, five-year, okay, fine. Uh, our discussion up on Butternut Lane and for the rest of the town, that stuff that I pointed out patched on the side, is that an apron?
That is, no.
That's not an apron?
That's just a road edge.
All right, so that's just one of probably many areas in town. What does that fall under as far, I'm talking about the edge of the road where starts to crumple and everything else. And you have it on Ledge Hill Road and everything else.
Yeah.
Is there a special project for that?
No, that just falls under maintenance, on ours.
General maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Uh, and in reference to Lloyd's comment about Durden and Ledge Hill Road and about the amount of traffic and the heavy traffic and everything else, this, we, we have to build a cost into our budgets to repair the road for these vehicles coming through town to make a shortcut over to, uh, one oh nine by the water? Or in the winter time, oh damn, this might, in the winter time, we impose weight limits on the road, right? Or something like that?
Mud season.
Mud season.
Whatever the case may be, okay? But if these vehicles are destroying the road for the size of weight and everything else, I don't wanna do restraint of trade, but, you know, it's still money out of our pocket. Thank you for listening.
I can't imagine that there's that much traffic on Ledge Hill Road or Durden Road, commercial truck traffic that isn't directly or tangentially affected by needs and tougher borough. Why would a truck go that way?
Yeah. No, I think it's where work's being done and, but keep in mind, these trucks pay a lot more money for their registrations so that the money goes back to fixing roads.
Yep.
I mean, an average dump truck probably pays twelve hundred dollars a year for registration every year. That's an old one, not a new one.
I know a guy that pays thirty-five K a year just to register his trucks, plus fuel.
And not where you just. And be honest with it, being in a little bit in the trucking business, it's not a money-making business. It's necessary evil. You're just rolling money over, but you have to have it to stay in business. There's no money you can make. The cost is so much on those things.
Yeah, so the only guy making money is the guy that owns the gravel.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
I'll give you a call soon.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Do you wanna go over the estimated revenues now?
Sure. I have a copy.
You should have a copy.
I want to get it, sorry. Diane and I sort of fostered this a little bit on Monday or Tuesday or whatever day I was here. So, are we done with the bedroom tax? That was on Zadi Daud, right?
Yep.
So, their last payment was last year or this year?
Twenty eighteen, right?
Yes, I believe it was.
I think. Was it? I'm sorry. When we sell tax sealed property, does that fall under sealed municipal property? Oh, taxed.
Taxed, yeah.
Okay, so we're eighty ninety-nine.
Is that our net, eighty ninety-nine?
I believe that was what we netted out of those two sales.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In Primex, we had asked for a checkback, not a holiday.
And our fund balance is still close to a million bucks. It'll probably be over a million by the time year ends. This is going to help us set our tax rate.
Yes.
Along with the revale numbers, which hopefully we'll have by the end of the month.
Are there still people coming in to?
Yeah, we needed the fire station Monday and the town house on the phone.
Sure.
So, just to let you know, we did receive utility values. So, recently, I think yesterday or the day before. So, Rod will be able to work with that when he's in on Monday as well. He'll have his last meeting with people to make adjustments. The October meetings were unlikely depending on timing of things. Those people might have to go through the abatement process, but nonetheless, point being, be on track to submit the one this one. Soon, like, he said, you know, shortly after Monday, I think, so.
Good.
Can I ask a question about budgets? I've had a couple of department heads ask me when budgets for them are due by.
Tomorrow. Well, I mean, we've got a budget here and our budget meeting on the first of October. That's going to start. You know, I'm going to bring a lot of little budgets forward, but we're going to want to bring larger budgets forward sooner than later. I don't know what other information they need. We've got the cost of living.
Have we set a date saying we want your budget in by like we did with?
Yeah, I don't think we have, but I don't know that if we need to, I guess. Clay, I know, is pretty close on his.
Yes.
I don't know how. The fire chief's still on his. He's coming down on Monday anyway. So, I guess when they come in, although.
We'll have that conversation.
Yeah, I think then we can.
I just want you to be able to have a handful of information when you go.
Can you please vote on the revenue? Diane asked me to have a vote on it. Thank you.
I'm moving accept.
You want to put a number on it?
Read the number.
Yeah. Grand total of estimated revenue is two million eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars.
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Signature file. I've got a a letter to the folks whose property we had to take. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, but it's it partially pays the owed taxes. The balance to do is eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars. And we're told we've got thirty days to make some effort on that. I'll make a motion to the sign this.
Second. Aye.
The next day for signatures, they tend to cut on lots thirty-two, twenty-eight, thirty-two, twenty-nine, and thirty-two seventeen on middle road. I'll make a motion that we sign this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need to sign a release form for the state management department of transportation. This is the acceptance of management department of transportation and their responsibility for the fourteen hundred and ninety-nine dollar damage claim to the fence at nineteen mile bay.
So, I'll move Chairman sign it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just need.
Put the file. I've signed both, so I'm going to turn it to the file.
Okay. We've got a groundwater management permit for waste management division for the transfer station. And. This is a renewal, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
To what company?
Uh, the.
Is this from the state of New Hampshire?
It's going to the state and Clay did speak to Dave Allman of Stan Tech and it's appropriate, they said, they agreed to this recently.
So, it is groundwater management permit issued under RSA forty-five C four, Roman numeral eight. To responsible party to remedy contamination associated with past discharge or regulated contaminants and to manage the use of the contaminated groundwater. Examples include sites contaminated for the contaminated ground storage tanks, online landfills, which is what we are, and regulated pursuant to RSA fourteen M. So, it is what we do every year.
All right, and this is single signature, right?
I have to move this.
So, I will vote that Chairman sign this application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll let you fill it out, okay?
Yeah.
The next one is an application to cut timber on map thirty-two lot two four. I'll make a motion that we sign this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last, we have an application for timber cutting on map sixty-five lot one and two and lot two, or lot one dash two and lot two dash one. On Lake Park Road.
A little approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask you questions now?
Do you want to ask a question?
Some of the things in that folder, like the neck bridges, the Deckerboro neck bridge, and Sodom Road Bridge replacement, things like that. None of that.
For C I P?
Yeah.
What about it?
Do you want me to submit something for this year?
To C I P?
Yeah, I'm not really sure what I'm to do with.
They're not on there already?
They were.
Well, they were, they have historically, but we have to resubmit them our year.
And when's the C I P meeting?
Well, they're already in session. They asked for them by. Oh, with you guys, Wednesday, that's right, yeah.
Is it Wednesday?
Yeah.
So, can we have a list on Monday of what we're bringing them?
Well, absolutely, but what I typically do first is submit them through the portal and then they all get an email to them. And that's what I've been doing. So, I don't.
Because on the, on the, on the Tonsborough neck bridge and the Sodom Road bridge, I don't think it's not on there. We were not on the list. So, it's going to be twenty thirty-five or something.
Right, with the state, that's right, right. We're on the C I P plan, so, yeah. Should I just leave that on limbo right now until you meet with them?
So, you went to this.
I did.
Bridge meeting.
And we. I actually stood up on the.
Yeah, so we, I thought, had at least one of those on the list.
No.
Several years ago.
Right.
Yeah.
The problem is that I see and I mean, I'm just flipping through the pages.
Yes.
They said we're not doing anything but state roads. Okay, well, why are we spending four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars on County Farm Road and over Blood Brook in Wilton? I don't know. I mean, we're spending another three hundred and eighty-one thousand on Stagecoach Road over Burton Pond in Wilton. These are not state highways. These are just town roads.
Yep.
I mean, there's a million one hundred and eighty-four going over King Brook Road over King Brook Bridge. So, you got one five, one eight, you got a little over two million bucks being spent in Wilton and we're, we've been kicked off the list. So, I've got a card here for that particular D O T offer of Mr. William Cass. And I think we need to put some pressure on it, because neither one of our projects are on any list that they have.
Did you have a conversation with someone?
I did, and I can give you a little summary that.
Okay, could you give me a summary?
If you don't mind, I'll read from my notes here. So, H E B, a nice summary to us about, which is just what you're saying, the state aid bridge program funding and turmoil. They would, H E B was told that tentatively in two years, projects will be reassigned beginning with the fiscal year twenty thirty-one. This included both our projects and a new ranking process is being presented through this G A C I T, what I'm not sure what that stands for, to replace the prior first come, first served basis. So, it's not going to be like that anymore and they won't even be looked at for two years and our projects got put in that pile.
Right, and our projects, there are five criteria and I've got. And two of the five criteria we're going to struggle with. One is population and the other is traffic. Sodom Road gets a lot of traffic.
Number one road.
But Tougher Neck, not so much.
However, it's the only road to the neck.
Yeah, I guess. I, I mean, we could commandeer the road around the basin and work something out there to get the traffic to go that way. I mean, I think it'd be easy and I don't think the Ferraris would like it too much, but.
It doesn't even go through.
Yeah.
It can go through though.
No.
No?
No.
Really?
Really.
I'm looking at the map.
The only way it used to go through was the Barber Pole to Banfield.
Right, Banfield Road, Barber Pole Road.
Right.
Banfield's back toward one oh nine.
Right. Yeah, and in theory, they connect up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you driven that recently?
Which one?
Barber Pole through to Banfield.
You can't, because there's a fence in the way.
Well, we can take the fence. At any rate, I don't think you get a fire truck through there.
No, for sure you can't.
You know, the half billion dollars worth of real estate value down there is just going to be.
Right, right.
So, I.
And making improvements to that road to make it passable.
Bring the marshmallows.
Would be huge expense.
Yeah, be as much as the bridge.
More than the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the bridge would get eighty percent back.
Yeah, well, we don't. I said, I said, you can't do this. I said, you cannot red-list a bridge and not have us have a bridge program. I mean, if you're going to do that, then we're going to stop paying the highway use taxes. Now, what's the point? We have to fix everything ourselves and you're giving money to other towns. I mean, I'm just seeing a lawsuit all over this thing.
I'm good.
And you guys need to get your shit together with the governor and council and Mike was there crying. I said, get some money here. I mean, it's the governor that vetoed the, the bridge fund.
And when the legislature upped the gas tax two years ago for the first time since ever. The legislature went and broke it up to fishing game and everyone else and didn't put it toward bridges or roads. So, you know, the frauds have an issue.
And part of it is, I mean, you know, our legislature just needs to get their ass in gear. I mean, when was the last time we had a legislator come and get us?
Dr. Marsh.
When he was running. So, at any rate, I don't see anything happening with those bridges that we're going to have to.
The only thing that does bail us out a little bit is the repairs that were made to Sodom Road that bought us some more time.
Right, but that's an expense that we had to make because the state inspected the bridge and decided it was, you know.
Yeah, they're spoiling, derated it.
And they're saying, well, we're federally mandated to do bridge inspection. They said, that's fine with me, just don't list them. Put it, inspect them, do whatever you want to do with it, but do not tell us what we got to do with our bridges. We'll do it ourselves. We'll hire our own inspector. And we could fix the bridge. We could probably fund it ourselves.
Yep.
But it just seems, I get a little bit negative about Wilton having two million dollars worth of bridge work done and Tougher gets nothing. I don't know who lives in Wilton that's sucking up to the legislature.
Right on.
So, at any rate, and I did talk to them about, because I was on a rant at that point in time, the four corners at one seventy-one and Durgan, Lett Hill Road. I said, we're looking for something. And I said, I'm sure no one at this table is the, are the ones who uttered this, but someone from your department said it has to be a fatality before you do anything. And if we have to have a human sacrifice, a route against roadwork type or some safety issues addressed, I think we've got bigger problems.
I understand. You are absolutely right. I knew the last three people killed at one seven one and twenty-eight. And I took it upon myself with permission to go speak to them. The legislature overruled the highway department. Right, and guess what's going in?
Yeah.
Not because. Not, not because of me, but.
But at any rate, so we need, you know, we wanted some sort of signage, we wanted some traffic, things going on, I wanted a blinking yellow light. I mean, the other thing that they're talking about is doing some detouring of traffic off of sixteen across one-seventy-one. I said, now what do I do with my local traffic? You increase the traffic, and right now, if you drive over to West Osipie, you, you wait twenty minutes in line, or you go around the Woodya Road, the old, the old road. And there's bumper-to-bumper cars there.
Right, well, I have that question in a moment. The police chief is here. What are you doing for increased, no, patrol? Cause it, one-seventy-one's busy now, think of a, a few of the trucks are going over there, and I'm prepared to ask him. Will your buddies in the county and the state police help us out one day a week?
There's no signage, so it doesn't really matter. I mean, you have the police up there, so they won't go fifty-five. But when a dump truck's sitting there at the corner of Durgan and one-seventy-one, waiting to bring his load down to the subject system at Camp Bellness for half an hour while the traffic rolls by, I mean, we're just gonna end up with road rage and all kinds of other stuff.
Well, the third person in the last year told me that he was coming up the hill in his truck, and a tractor-trailer at one-seventy-one and Durgan Road went through it forty miles an hour.
Yeah, it didn't bother to stop.
And didn't bother to stop, and that's the third person that told me they've almost got killed at that intersection.
So we had that, I had, I wanna crosswalk that on one-on-nine for the beach. And I said, crosswalk at the Tuffinboro General Store, crosswalk at the, uh, police station, the library. I said, every time we've approached anybody about, and this was back when the store was open in Nineteen Mile Bay, and it got parking on both sides. They said, they don't wanna slow the traffic down, and they're not gonna put a crosswalk in, and I said, we're gonna start taking our own paint can out there and putting our own signs up there, because if you.
That's what a couple towns that direction have done.
Yeah, yeah, cause it's just, it becomes an untenable situation. But I did talk to Mike about Nineteen Mile Pier. He was surprised that, he'd never heard of Grant and Wright. But the other day, when I was talking to Sue Weeks, we started postulating that where Union Warford was a range road, that it probably ran to the edge of the lake, and people washed their boats or whatever they drink. And when the lake rose three or four feet, it flooded that section of road.
Where that intersection, it used to be underwater, uh, three centuries ago.
Yeah.
That's all been flooded.
But if they flooded the road, then, then you're looking at, well, okay, you can't just take land, and that would be a taking. We've, we've got a right, a fifty-foot right-of-way out through there to the end of where the original road bed was. So there's another angle, if you will, for the amount of... But Mike, as Mike, and certainly with my quoting, but we all understand that Department of Environmental Services is budgeting with public money or with private money. In other words, you pay a fine so that they can make.
Right.
There's no, I don't think there's a state budget for that department anymore. They're doing their office.
They're also overwhelmed.
Yeah, well, another issue where you can't operate a state with nineteenth-century principles in the twenty-first century, it just doesn't work.
It's like DC YU.
Yeah. Anyway, anything else? I'll voice my other complaint.
Should I, should I submit those to CIP or just let them lie for now until you meet with them on Wednesday?
Is there any realistic way that those bridge projects will be contemplated within the next ten years?
What was the date? It said twenty-thirty-one, so now the point, twenty-three, one with the state.
There's no way that we can estimate the cost. I, I mean, I'm not ready to put a number on twenty-thirty.
If they said with seven years, well, please put it seven years out, and it's a placeholder.
We can always add it in, you know, next year, if we can get some sort of legislative.
Yeah.
Last question I have regarding those things is, uh, HEB asked if, they said they had offered before to help with Federal Corner Road or any other projects, and they also mentioned they could put landfill monitoring out to bid. I know at the last meeting, you folks had mentioned Clay and I, but I mean, to be honest with you, I'm not sure if we're both, either one of us comfortable with that. I mean, I don't know. I, I suppose just putting out to bid, sure, have you folks should be with.
I had a conversation with Clay, and he would like to be heard on that, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, but I don't think either one of them are qualified to actually put that bid out.
That's what I mean, I guess, so that's where we thought HEB might be.
Yeah.
And none of us here are qualified to award the bid out without some kind of engineering review outside of the bidder.
Correct.
Maybe we need to look at HEB.
Well, ask them for a quote or something?
I would, I, I, I'm not sure how this works with respect to closed landfill monitoring. But the agency that requires the reports ought to be able to tell us who in the state is qualified to, to do the work.
That's true.
Yeah, you know, in, in.
You have to list.
Well, right, in other areas, uh, contractors have to be certified to do certain kinds of work that are, that are gonna.
No, if we hire, if we hire furnace people or electricians, you know, they have to meet state licensing, so.
It's a little different, though.
But the point is, the state has said, yes, you can legally do the work. Conceptually, there's a parallel.
Yeah, I just think the state's gonna come back and say, well, you know, put your thing out to bid, and when they bid, ask them if they're approved by the DESS. I don't know if they're gonna get into the selection business.
Well, I'm, I'm like you, I'm not asking them to make the selection for us, but I need to know.
Yeah, who, where do you send the letter?
Right.
My brother and I can't submit a proposal.
So, yeah, so.
Why don't we?
We have, you know, contact whoever it is at the state that this, that the landfill monitoring stuff goes to, and see if we can get a, a list of contractors, consultants, whatever, yeah.
We just.
That. They can be considered for doing this work.
Start there.
I have a.
Yeah, even if we just got a list, so that we could reference it to whatever bids we get in. I mean, if we can make it as open-ended as that, we're not looking for them to promote any particular lab.
Right.
Just give us some ideas so we don't waste our time. A lot of people.
I have a question for you. Will you be coming to a CIP meeting?
Yes.
And then HEB's.
And I hope she'll put us on first, cause I got another meeting to go to afterwards.
I didn't notice that.
It is noticed.
I did, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't.
Super.
If you would, if you would ask Jill to put us first on our agenda.
Can you send her a, us?
That would be great, because I do have another commitment to that evening, and I'd like to make both of them.
Last question I think I have for you is, do you have any interest with HEB for other projects, Letchell Road or, excuse me, not Letchell, Federal Corner, I think? It might have been mentioned in the past, that's what his email said.
Yeah, I mean, I would mind having him come down as a, you know, chat with Jill. And I, if we're gonna put a war art together for special work projects, I think we need to have them a little bit engineered.
Yes, and I worked with them on Lang Pond Road, and I found them to be very, uh, professional, good to work with. And, no, that started out as a four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar project. They estimated one-sixty, and it came in at one-forty-seven, so the process worked.
Well, no, catch up with things that you don't think about, that you're not.
Yes.
Hard up. Okay. Anything else, now, cause my, my only complaint. And I'll voice it to my brother, Mr. Markison. I don't know how it is that the applicant for something at the planning board is not notified earlier. I, it just is beyond me how that would happen.
So that's why you weren't through last night?
I have no, no notification at all. In fact, I paid for postage, certified mail postage.
Right.
For a letter to me.
You didn't get it?
No, I never got anything.
Well.
I want my postage money back.
We have an, we have an ongoing issue with that post office. Uh, I, I.
I don't know if anybody got it, cause.
Yes, well, I, I do know another butter got it, and it was like way, way, way late. It's like way after it was mailed. But this post office down here is just, you know, they kinda do stuff when they get, when they feel like doing it, so I, you never got your post?
I've never, I've got nothing, cause I would've been there. I was sitting at home watching television. I hadn't even been doing that. I mean, I've been sort of waiting for the hearing, cause I knew you guys were busy with Farm Island, et cetera. But, and I know that Lakes Region Conservation's looking for some resolution to this. It doesn't seem to be a major problem.
No, shouldn't be.
Getting Lynn back to the same guy that had it before.
Yeah, no, shouldn't be, so.
I mean, I'll, I'll get down to the post office and ask if they've got a letter waiting for you guys, but I was never gonna, and I go in there every day from now on. They never want that. If it was a registered letter, I'm sure they would've found it.
I would think so, but I do want to think, you're not the only person that's had mail issues down there, so.
Well, okay, and I don't have a problem laying in the post office, but some other form of notification, I mean, some. All right, I'm done. Are we done?
The journey's on.
Okay, I'm gonna change speed?
I'm done, yeah.
Ten-thirty?
Yep.
Checks are signed?
Yep.
Good to go. I'm gonna leave this highway project.